Had to happen. Are we ready?
I'm ready when you are.
You guys ready?
Yeah.
Okay. Good evening and welcome to Sharonville City Council. If everyone would please rise, we're going to have a moment of silent prayer and then I've just asked one of our Vietnam veterans to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Ledbetter, you're welcome that I didn't pick on you.
Mr. Tankersley?
Here.
Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Mr. Coulter?
Here.
Mr. Lovett?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mrs. Knight?
Here.
And Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes from March 8th meeting? Seeing none, those stand as written and distributed, reports and communication, and we're going to jump in line here a little bit, and we're going to turn the floor over to Sue Knight. She is our Honored Citizen Chairperson.
Thank you very much. I would like to see if Buck would come up and lead us in God Bless America. He does a nice rendition. He was at our Senior Citizens Meeting the other, yesterday, and he did a great job, so take it, Buck.
Thank you very much, Sue. My favorite council people from my residence in this great city for the last 25 years or so. Glad to be with you tonight. Glad to be with a group of fellow service people, most of whom probably spent a little bit of time across that pond with the, since today is Vietnam Veterans Recognition Day. I'm happy to come before you and do a song that has meant a great deal to me over the years. I have the distinct honor of singing it at the revolving pool in Washington DC this past year with honor pite that requested by Ann Winstone. I will, as I do with the Memorial Day programs, I'll start off and share with you the verse to God Bless America, because it's not done very often, and then I would ask you to join in with me to do the chorus. As the storm clouds gather far across the sea, let us swear allegiance to a land that's free. Let us all be grateful for a land so fair. As we raise our voices in a solemn prayer. Thank you.
Something to say to our veterans who have holidayed in Vietnam. They are the local Vietnam veterans in North Vietnam, 27th, 1970. They need the military awards, American Mars Vietnam Veterans Day. It focuses attention on the homecoming, distinct experience that defines the Vietnam generation of veterans. It gives us a chance to say, "Welcome home, welcome home," to the group of veterans who never got that reception they deserved when they returned to the United States. So when I call your name, please, if the mayor would help me? All right, when I call your name, could you please step forward? Charlie Pew. The mayor has a little something for you. We have some Sharonville pins with the flag on it, so you'll be a part of Sharonville. These are all our Sharonville veterans. Al Ledbetter.
(Inaudible).
Lee Bond.
(Laughter).
Buck Wilkins. Carrie Rabe. Doug Rudichel. And then the three following gentlemen, they are members of our Sharonville VFW, Vietnam Vets. Jack Rogers. Greg Simpson. And Ron Harris. Let's have a round of applause for these great, great Americans.[574.66][574.66](Applause). Thank you, thank you so much, and like I said before, you never got a welcome home, so welcome home. We're going to take a couple minutes so we can get some pictures. We have some refreshments over there. We'll take about a five-minute break and give a little...
I think I got my thing on here. Thank you very much for the brief intermission. Mrs. Knight, thank you for a wonderful honoring the veterans tonight. That was very nice, so thank you for getting that organized and taking care of that for us. We're going to move on now to reports of communication with Mayor Hardman.
So first of all, so as you all, I think, have heard, and so we'll talk about it publicly, because this is our first public meeting since then, so on March 15th, we had a very devastating fire that occurred up at Goldenview Acres. One of the, one of the, of course, I don't know, it depends on how you look at it, but one of the buildings of one of the units was completely destroyed as a result of that fire. Two other units are completely out until we are able to renovate those. Let me say publicly to all of our Public Works folks, our fire department people, our police department, and so many others that just responded tremendously well to a very sad situation up there, and for their hard work, but I want to single out one person in particular, and that is Andy Bauer. I had the chance, it just so happened, we obviously had our employee recognition event at the end of that week, and had the chance to congratulate him in front of our entire staff and single him out, but I'll let you know and publicly let him know that his work with that group of people every day that live up at Goldenview Acres is a tremendous asset to us here at the city of Sharonville, but in particular, that day on March 15th, Andy's probably responsible for making sure there wasn't any casualties or anybody harmed as a result of that fire that day, and his quick work in getting over there, and what I told him, and told our employees, the day of, our day of our employee appreciation is in a day and age where so many people run the other way when there's danger or concern for people. That is not what Andy does, and I don't think a lot of our employees would do it either, but what he did was he ran into those buildings and made sure that everybody was out, even to the point of he had to be held back, I think, from running back in to get somebody's pet, although the pet did get out, if I'm not mistaken, so ultimately, anyway, but he had to be told, "No, stop, you've done what you need to do right now." So a public acknowledgement to Andy. I want, I want to thank Steve Boozam and his entire crew, and working with all of our fine insurance folks, and, because I put what I thought at the time was probably an insurmountable goal to all of them, was that I wanted to get the six folks, the six units that were not damaged, but they didn't have power, they didn't have electric to their buildings, because the electric is fed from one end of the building that basically burnt out. So I put what, what I thought at the time was probably a very difficult task, and I think Steve probably would tell you he thought so too, I said, "I really want to get those six folks back into their apartments by April 1st." So as of last night, every one of those six folks are back in their apartments, because of the hard work of him and his crew, and we have two vacant apartments at Goldenview Acres. One that was ready to go, that we were looking to rent out, the other one was probably a long ways down the road of being able to get done. Again, our great Public Works team put their heads together and figured out, how do we get these two units in a place where we can get two of the six still displaced residents into a unit up at Goldenview Acres quickly, and they have done that as well. So we've got, you all know, we've got a great team that work for us here, but they really shine in circumstances like this, so thank you. Steve is here tonight. I know he was asked to come here by Jim, in case there were any questions or any additional comments that he wants to make about Goldenview Acres, so I'll turn to him now, rather than waiting for Jim's report to do that, if he had anything else he wants to add on that front, or you guys have any questions on Goldenview Acres.
Yeah, to start off, I would also, obviously, police, fire, my Public Works guys are fantastic. I'd like to thank the neighboring, all the other communities, the fire departments that responded to the fire. That response was absolutely impressive, and to watch crews from five different, five-plus different municipalities work in one to put out that fire was, it was just phenomenal to see. Obviously devastating, don't ever want to have to see it again, but truly, the training that the police and fire go through, it was fantastic. I'd also like to thank our Community Development Department in the part, in getting these six residents back in, we had to get some permitting done for the electric, and they were extremely helpful, working, helping us in the right direction with their permitting. NIC, the company that we use for permitting, they were fantastic. Duke Energy was great in response to get power back on, and so I just, I'd like to thank them as well, along with the contractor we brought in. In a day and age where everybody's short-staffed, we made a call to our contractor that was recommended to us, and they hopped right to it. So it was, it was a lot of people that came together to get these folks back in. They were all very happy when I made phone calls yesterday afternoon and said that they could move back in at their, when they're ready. And not to correct you, Mayor Hardman, but we have one apartment available. One of those six have already signed a lease this morning to change her address to one of the two that was ready. And we've got a third apartment that the guys are busting at to get renovated, to have somebody move in as soon as possible as well, so we're in good shape. I greatly appreciate the guys and your support, but it's been a, been an ordeal, but they've stepped up to it. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them the best I can.
(Inaudible).
Thank you. Thanks. On, with regard to a couple of personnel notes that maybe you all want to know about, so I want to give you a little bit of an update on, on some things that are going on. First of all, as we've had conversations and budget and other things about Economic Development Director position, we are actively searching for that role. I will say that we had a, the last couple of months, we had a lead on an individual that would have been a great addition to our team here in Sharonville. Unfortunately, that person had a different career path they were looking to go down, so that did not work out. So our ad is going back out to get and solicit some more resumes, and hopefully, as we see what we get, feedback we get from that, this round, and we'll keep you all in the loop on that. Along those same lines, I'm sure you probably have heard that Katie Canolopoulos is leaving us, and she is moving into an economic development role in Westchester. That will be focused on kind of small businesses, the way I understand it, up with Westchester. We are super excited for her, and a great opportunity for her moving into her professional development from that standpoint, so, but we will be sad to miss her. She's been a great part of the city in working not just on the finance side with Scott and the things that she's done there, but also she really took, she really took charge in a different way, in order, in helping with our economic development efforts, especially as it revolves around the downtown loop and some of the things we've done there, as well as our facade grant program has been one of her big issues that she's worked with over the years. So we are sad to see her go, but it's a great opportunity for her, and there's no reason why, why she wouldn't have grabbed a hold of that opportunity. As Steve mentioned, NIC, working with our Community Development Department because of our vacancy in our building inspector role. our vacancy and our Building Inspector role, we are still actively searching for someone to fill that position. Unfortunately, we have had zero applicants, I think is correct, maybe one.
Zero that meet all of them.
Zero that meet the qualifications with, that we need, specifically the certifications that we need for that role. So, we are still advertising, we are still out there trying to find someone to meet that role. In the meantime, NIC has been doing an excellent job being receptive to our needs as a city and what we need to do. But I just wanted to let you all know that, that that job is not filled yet, and it's not because we've changed our direction or about having a employee working for the city of Sharonville. Just, it's a matter of, it's difficult to find individuals that have the certifications we need to fulfill that role. So, we are continuing to look, and we'll see what comes of this next advertisement round for that job. Other than that, that is the updates I have for all of you tonight.
Got any questions?
Thank you. The legislation this evening has a variety of items, including Resolution 2022 R 04, which is a third reading for nature's work grant for Gorman Park. Michael Blommer talked about this a couple of meetings ago. This allows us to apply for the grant. I don't think Michael has anything to add to that. I don't think we've had anything really more specific yet from MSP, but we'll get that grant submitted, assuming this is approved this evening.
Before you move on and while Michael's here, if you haven't been over to Gorman Park yet to see the work that, that has happened with regard to Phase 1B, I don't know which phase we're in, whatever it is. It looks fantastic. I would encourage you to get over there and look at it. Are we going to do some kind of grand opening of that splash pad thing, or is it going to be too, or we'll be starting the demolition and it'll be too crazy? What do you think?
We're hoping to, but it's likely not going to occur when splash pad opens for the first time because the demolition.
Yeah. So, get over there and take a look at it. We'll have something at some point to celebrate the, that, that park and the changes that we're making over there. But the shelter and the splash pad and the parking, new parking area looks absolutely phenomenal. It's, you know, just, just where we're at right now, I think, is a fantastic addition to what was over there before, and there's more to come. So, make sure you get over there. Sorry.
Ordinance 2022-20E is an appropriation ordinance dealing with three aspects. One is GVA and getting some money appropriated to start the process of repair work with costs that we will likely get back from risk insurance. That's $25,000. Second item is SwimSafe, additional appropriation for our pool this year, $56,000, dealing with increasing costs and wages and chemicals. Michael, do you have anything to add regarding that?
The only thing I wanted to add on, onto that is we've had a fantastic relationship, partnership with SwimSafe through the years. We started with them back in 2019. Actually, it was 18 from a maintenance standpoint, but 19 in terms of a management contract. We signed a three-year contract at that point. We had an option to do an additional year here for 2022, which we were happy and excited to do. So, we have had a fantastic relationship with them, and we're excited for continuing.
And then the third aspect deals with our downtown Loop project, appropriating a little over $2 million and allowing us to enter into, to go out to bid and award the bid. Clienters is here this evening to talk about the downtown Loop project. We have a video to share. Come on up and talk us through the, many of you heard this at the downtown, or the Project Review Committee meeting, so it's going to be a duplicative, but Terry, do you want to start the video?
Sure, yeah. And I'm Mike Slay. So, I think it's going to be a fly-through of the downtown area, improving two streets and the Depot Square. So, this is a video of Creek Road, and as you're walking down it, you'll see basically some landscape improvements, obviously, streetscape improvements. We're doing some colored concrete on both the sidewalks and the roadway, so new curb, new street trees and large tree pits as well to help those grow, new lighting along Creek as well. So, this is in an effort to kind of improve vitality downtown, potentially close off the street periodically for events, special events you might have downtown. Some vehicular stop collars at both ends of Creek Road here that you'll see coming up there that can be removed or put back in place depending on what's happening along Creek. And then we're moving towards Depot Square. And as you can see here, there's a lot happening within, within this space, so a new kind of amphitheater area in the corner there, which allows us to have a sign at the corner to address not only the pedestrian flow, but also the vehicular flow. Branding elements within the pavement itself, landscaping improvements. We have, Creek Road has the same traffic configuration as today, so it's not changed. We did add some raised planters along Creek Road because that's a blushing curb there. So, we wanted to create a little barrier between Depot and Creek Road. Okay, sorry. Better? Okay, sorry about that. So, then, as we're turning around in Creek here on the video, you can see that little amphitheater area with a small splash pad. This is meant to be kind of decorative in nature, but also to activate the space. It can be turned off, so you can still use that space as an open configuration. Amenity improvements within Depot would be site furnishings, a shade shelter as we're looking here between already and the Depot building, drinking fountain, tables and chairs, a small stage in the back for kind of a one-man band situation, and electrical hookups there. So, that was a very brief and quick overview of the project. We also are improving Walnut Street. There are going to be minor improvements there, and it's basically a mill and overlay situation of the roadway and restriping to allow some, some parking on the street. So, as Jim mentioned, the budget, we did engage a third-party estimator for this, J.S. Held, and the project came in a little over $2 million for the project as a whole. So, I'm really excited about this one. I think it's a great, great project for downtown, so happy to answer any questions you all may have.
Anyone have questions, Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, I've just, look, thinking back, I know there was, there was a lot of conversation about what would happen in front of the Cultural Arts Center. There was going to be an inset or a lane closing or something along those lines. I don't, I didn't see that because like we had tents there, it looked like to me, but I couldn't, couldn't really tell.
This is Creek Road, that's Walnut.
Okay, but that, so, but I thought that included going down by the Cultural Arts Center. It does not then?
So, it's just within Walnut Street in the mid-block there, and it's just a repaving of Walnut Street, so there won't be any changes to the curb line. It is some restriping that allows a little bit of on-street parking, but nothing is changing from, you know, a dimensional standpoint with, with Walnut itself.
And that's just, is that, that's the, what did that be, the, the east side of, to the east side of Main Street or Reading Road? Is that right? Like, I don't think it's going into the area that would be on the west side yet.
It's not, no.
Yeah, so that's, this, this part of it, this initial phase.
This phase, okay.
Is Depot Square.
Gotcha.
Creek Road, and then Walnut Street, which is the one that feeds to the Cultural Arts Center, but is not, not that feeder lane that turns. That is not part of this, this first phase.
Going to show you?
Yeah. This is the.
Okay, was that an area where they were looking at a pocket park or something along those lines? Is that out of bounds too?
That's, yeah, that's not within this scope.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you for clearing that out.
Anyone else?
Just one quick.
Yeah, Mr. Lucas.
So, Mike, I asked you guys to look at, there was two electric poles in front of the Depot building, and I couldn't attend the meeting, but I know you guys chatted about whether that can go down to one pole or whether perhaps do an alternate to see what underground utilities would cost. What's, what came out of that meeting and where?
Sure. Yeah, thanks for the reminder on that. So, we're talking about on, in between basically the Depot building and Creek Road, there's two utility poles as you approach kind of the end of Creek Road. And we did meet with Duke Energy onsite to understand what, what feasibility of burying those lines basically along that edge of Depot Square. So, the two options that we came up with, one is a minimal approach and one is full, you know, relocation of those lines. So, the minimalist approach would be, it's a short enough span that we could remove one of the poles and kind of clean up some of the visual clutter within, within the space. We keep the end pole and might shift it back kind of away from the Depot building itself. And that would be a no-cost change. Duke would actually pick up those, those costs associated with that. It would still be an overhead aerial line, but you would eliminate one pole, basically. The other approach would be burying the lines. That does involve obviously removal of the two poles. It involves setting a new switchgear transformer that would be kind of back. It does serve two buildings behind this area, behind Depot Square, so those services would have to be relocated and fixed as a part of this project. And just rough numbers, they're talking probably $120,000 roughly to bury those lines along that edge and set up a new service to those two buildings. So, that was kind of the discussion that we had and.
One other question. So, I was attending the meeting where you discussed this, and there was another project that we talked about in terms of the creek. Is Duke going to have any issue, or do we have to pre-plan Duke coming in to do this work? Because at the, at the last meeting, you mentioned that the larger work that they had on Wise Carver wasn't that we had to pick up certain dates for them to do their work?
So, Duke has been, we've been doing utility coordination with Duke as a part of this project along Creek Road, so they're, they're aware of this. We actually just recently sent them our updated plan, so they're not, they're not planning any major changes along Creek Road as a part of this project. GCWW is going to be relocating water lines in both Walnut and Creek Road, just to kind of get them updated so that once we have that project, they're not tearing up the street, you know, in five years to make replacements.
Any other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, ordinance 2022-21E, are some minor amendments to the Chronic Nuisance Property Code that Council passed three, four months ago. Mike and police officers in their review caught some, again, some minor changes that needed to be made, mostly grammatical, nothing changing the substantive nature of the ordinance. Mike's here this evening to talk about the changes if anybody has questions.
Can anyone have questions on those changes? Do you want to just speak to it since you're here? Thank you for coming out. Appreciate you.
You should have hired the smarter Mathis, my wife, to proofread this ordinance. She taught English. There are just a few minor grammatical issues. There's, we added the definition of trust to operators, you know, in addition to like associations, companies, LLCs, we added trust. And we massaged the language as it comes to the Health Department because we have Butler County and Hamilton County, although we use Hamilton County, we just kind of generically phrased it, "The applicable Health Department" that would work. So, really, there's no substantive changes to the ordinance as far as what classifies as a nuisance activity or how many nuisance activities a property could have before it would get in trouble, or what the process is of dealing with a property that gets too many nuisance activities. It's really just cleaning up a little bit of grammar and massaging a few words, but no substantive changes.
Any questions on that? Thank you so much. And we hired the right one. We get two for, we get her and you.
Resolution 2022 R 06E deals with the opioid settlement. Casey's been following this a lot more than I have, so he will speak on that.
Sure. So, the One Ohio Memorandum of Understanding that we voted in last year is coming together where there are basically three sums of money. One sum that's going to be distributed directly to local governments, we're not sure what that's going to be quite yet. A sum of money that's going to be handled by the Ohio Attorney General's Office, and a sum of money that's going to be handled by a nonprofit called the One Ohio Foundation. And that's what this has to do with. So, this has nothing to do with any type of money that would come to us directly. So, the One Ohio Foundation has a number of members, of which there are 19 districts that each get their own member, and each district, Hamilton County is District 2, is in charge of setting up their own regional governance. So, Hamilton County Commissioners kind of took the lead as far as setting up or proposing a regional governance in the way the regional governance becomes legitimate is by the various municipalities within the region saying, "Yes, this is the regional governance we want." So, they asked us to do that. I've been in talks with Chief Sunderman about the One Ohio Foundation, and Chief Nesbit was at Law Committee as well, and myself and both of them are of the opinion that this is okay to go ahead and pass. It basically follows the same kind of structure that the Heroin Coalition adopted through the Hamilton County Commissioners, and since the One Ohio Foundation has a lot to do with heroin recovery, opioid recovery, I think that's why they did it that way. But if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to try to answer them, but that's what it's about.
Now, is there any questions? Thank you.
All right, then. Last, Resolution 2022 R 07E deals with House Bill 563, which would put restrictions on cities' abilities to prohibit or regulate short-term rentals, Verbo's or Airbnbs. Back in 2018 and 19, Council passed legislation prohibiting those in the city limits. We think that should be a, a local decision and not something that the state should decide for us. Therefore, we have a resolution in front of you opposing the adoption of that bill.
Is there any questions regarding that? Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Lucas this evening? All right, seeing none, we'll move on. For my report tonight, I really don't have one, but I would like to tell everyone, the reason that we're getting feedback on these is your cell phones are close to your microphones. So, move your cell phones, and we'll get rid of all the feedback. Guaranteed. Thank you. That's from Terry, by the way. I don't know how to operate these things. Terry's like, "It's their cell phones." So, let's keep our cell phones away from the microphones, and it might not make all that crackling noise. Thank you. Now, we'll move on to our clerk of court. Oh, I did forget, we did send money for Darren Upps' mother-in-law because he's not technically an employee, but he does run our Historical Society and does a lot for the community. So, Mr. Tankersley reached out to me, and I, so I sent money in her name down to Ruth Lyons on all of our behalf, so just so everybody knows. All right, Mrs. Buhyte, our clerk of council.
This is just a liquor permit notice that a liquor license transfer from CFM 29011 Inc. transferred to the new owners of Amerestop located at 11114 Main Street was signed and returned.
Perfect.
Yes. Believe it.
Auditor, Mr. Cunningham.
Good evening, everybody. This is actually my first time reporting this year, which I'm sure you all are on the edge of your seat. I can tell. At least on my side of things, there's not a lot going on, which is a good thing. I've said that before, I'm going to say it again. This time of year, there really isn't a lot happening. We're, we're 16% through the year, and we've only spent a little less than 10%. That gap usually is that way until we get further along in the year and it closes at the end of the year. So, very normal times right now, no fireworks here. I'm going to let Mr. Iry talk about fireworks.
Fireworks. All right, we'll move into the treasure.
Mr. Iry. The fireworks, I guess, that Mr. Cunningham is referring to would be the, the income tax and the motel tax, which the motel tax is up in 70.8%, which is a great sign. The income tax is also up 8.36% year-to-date. Just for comparison purposes, on the general fund, as Mr. Cunningham said, we are 16% through the year, but the general fund is, the revenue's already at 18%.
through the year, but the general fund is, the revenue is already at 18% of what we estimated for the year. And comparison-wise to last year, we are about almost $300,000 more than we were in revenue at this time last year. So there's your fireworks.
Our underground electric.
Underground electric. Yeah, perfect. That's my report.
Thank you. Are there any questions for either one of them? Seeing none, we'll move on to our law director, Mr. Lippert.
Thank you. I don't have anything else to report unless anybody has questions about something else. Thank you.
All right, we'll move on. It's now opportunity for residents that wish to be heard this evening. And our resident favorite is here.
Hello, Tim Schmidt, 12215 Pickwick Place, Sharonville. I'm also a member of PFT Enterprises LLC. We own property in Sharonville, and it's property that the Sharon Creek Project is going to affect. We're wondering, we did get paperwork from, is it West Erie Realty, and we have several questions. One, I was wondering, is there going to be a face-to-face meeting again? I know back several months ago when this started, there was face-to-face and people did ask questions, but I think as far as we're concerned, there's a whole lot more questions that we have, and I didn't know if there was a face-to-face going to happen on that.
Just to answer that, so I did let Greg with West Erie know that you had some questions, and he should have reached out to you or tried reaching out to you by now to help answer some of those. If he hasn't, I'll reach back out again tomorrow and...
Well, when I, when I talked to you the other day, when I called you the other day, you told me to call up there, and there's still, you know, when you try to do things over the phone, there's still a lot of questions that we have. One question we have, I noticed, I didn't realize it at the time, when this all started, that the property at 10973 Main Street was going to be affected because of utility easement or right-of-way or whatever you want to call it. There is no telephone pole on that property, but I assume that it's the easement for the overhead wires, I assume is what that has to do with. I don't know. You know, is that, are they going to be changing those wires?
Yeah, again, they're, they're the ones to ask all the questions.
Okay. The other, the other question, and I did specifically ask him this, and I, he didn't really give me a confirmed answer. Back however many years it was, it might have been 2000, I don't remember exactly going way back that far, I don't remember, when ODOT redid the bridge over, the bridge on Reading Road over the, over that same creek, just right there at the funeral home, they took, it was either 12 or 15 square feet of land from us. Yes, they did pay us a couple hundred dollars for it, but several years later, when we went to refinance that property, the lending institution says, oh, the description of the property at the courthouse of the deed doesn't match what it is now because ODOT made their own deed for that 12 square feet, 12 or 15 square feet, whatever it is. On this project, I assume it's going to be, the city of Sharonville is going to buy several hundred square feet. The rear, as the driveway goes out the back to Main Street, they're going to buy a small portion of that. And I'm, we're concerned that our copy of the, of the deed or will be corrected so it's the actual, the way it is now. When it happened with ODOT, ODOT would not correct it. They would not redo it. They said, that's been too many years ago, we're not going to redo it. We had to spend several thousand dollars to have that property surveyed and the title corrected. So that's one of our concerns that, and whether the city does that, I don't know who, who would do that. I mean, the city is buying the property, right?
Yeah.
Is that right? The city's buying the property?
And I'll reach out to Tetra in a sec about that and make sure that they get an answer. But yeah, the city's buying the property.
Okay, so that's, that's some of our concerns. You know, I'd hate to have to go back and spend several thousand dollars again to have the, the property. In fact, in those days, years ago, whoever we talked to at the courthouse, I don't know what office it is that handles the deeds, I'm not, but they said that ODOT should have changed that, but since we didn't find out for several years later, ODOT said, no, we're not going to change it. So, you know, that's one of our concerns. Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? We'll move on to our council committees. Community Development, Mr. Wilson.
I'll report.
Okay. Community Services, Mr. Lovett.
Thank you. No report tonight. Our next meeting will be April 6th at 4:00 p.m.
Okay, perfect. Budget and Finance, Mr. Cook.
Thank you. No report for Budget and Finance, but our next Budget Finance meeting will take place on April 12th at 6:00 p.m. in the Administrative Conference Room. Moving on to Project Oversight, we discussed this in depth last council meeting. We saw some of the information tonight, but essentially, we did review the FEMA project. We were granted, and I'll let Mayor Administration, Mr. Lewis chime in, 24-month extensions to essentially the March of 2024. And then we discussed the key dates. I know Mr. Coulter had mentioned, what I had was about starting, one option was to start the project in September of 2022, another one was December of 2022, and then the third one was spring of 2023. So essentially, I think the guidance was, as we discussed, there's pros and cons to all these, to try and start it sooner than later. And then the other op thing we discussed was the Downtown Loop renovation. You saw the fly, flyby, which was really exciting, so we're all excited about that. So that's my report. Thank you.
Are there any questions? Thank you. Honored citizens, Mrs. Knight, thank you once again.
You're very welcome.
Law and Public Safety, Mr. Schmidt.
The next Law and Public Safety Committee meeting will be April 5th, 4 o'clock, Administrative Conference Room. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mike, did you read any of what John Creech sent to you?
I did.
She's asking, should this, should that be put in the minutes?
It should be, yes. Sorry, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. All right.
I'm, I'm sorry, when he filed that, when he filed that report, I thought that automatically went in there.
That's your job, tell him to put it there.
I don't want anybody taking my job, so.
Well, there you go.
Get those in the minutes, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
There you go. All right, and I'm sorry, Mr. Schmidt, thank you very much. Rule suspension. First and only reading with immediate effectivity is Ordinance 2022-21E, 2022-21E, Resolution 2022 R06E, and 2022 R07E. Is there a motion for rule suspension? So moved by Mr. Lovett, second by Mr. Cook. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no. And we'll go on to unfinished business, please.
Third reading of Resolution 2022 R04, Resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to submit an application for a Nature Works grant through the Ohio Department of Natural Resources.
Is there a motion to pass Resolution 2022 R04? So moved by Mr. Tankersley, second by Mrs. Knight. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Tankersley?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Coulter?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Knight?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Resolution 2022 R04 has been approved.
We'll move into new business.
All right. First and only reading of Ordinance 2022-21E, amending the 2022 appropriations for various funds and authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into a contract for Downtown Loop project.
Is there a motion to, for Ordinance 2022-21E? So moved by Mr. Wilson, second by Mr. Cook. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Mr. Tankersley?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Coulter?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Knight?
Yes.
And Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance 2022-21E has been approved. Sure. First and only reading of Emergency Ordinance 2022-21E, amending health, safety, and sanitation code, Chapter 521.17, chronic nuisance property or premises, and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion to pass Ordinance 2022-21E? So moved by Mr. Coulter, second by Mr. Wilson. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Mr. Tankersley?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Coulter?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Knight?
Yes.
And Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Emergency Ordinance 2022-21E has been approved. First and only reading of Emergency Resolution 2022 R06E, approving participation in Region Two governance structure under the Ohio, under the One Ohio Memorandum of Understanding and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion to pass Resolution 2022 R06E? So moved by Mrs. Knight, second by Mr. Lovett. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Mr. Tankersley?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Coulter?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Knight?
Yes.
And Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Emergency Resolution 2022 R06E has been approved. First and only reading of Emergency Resolution 2022 R07E, opposing the adoption of House Bill 563, currently being considered by a committee of the Ohio House of Representatives, which proposes to limit local regulation of short-term rental property and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion to pass Resolution 2022 R07E? So moved by Mr. Wilson, second by Mr. Tankersley. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Mr. Tankersley?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Coulter?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Knight?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Emergency Resolution 2022 R07E has been approved.
Thank you. This is another opportunity for residents that wish to be heard this evening. Are there any other matters? Mr. Schmidt?
I was just going to say, I was out and about, we were putting in the Kemper sidewalks, as you know, going up there. And as I talked with Steve before the meeting, talked with a number of residents, and they were very complimentary on how it is being done. They were, they really do like the supervisor. I presume she's from Loveland Contractors or something, but her interaction with citizens is very good. They like the way they handle the traffic because it's one-way. They'll set lights up, you only go one way, one direction and the other. Very pleased with that. And all the questions were, there were no, really no complaints. Some, a couple on the upper end of Kemper wanted to know when the sidewalk's going to clear to the upper end of Kemper. And I told them, well, we got to get a sewer problem resolved first, and some of them weren't aware of the sewer problem. They were just relatively new residents, but that's been going for some time. Sewer project is completely independent of the city of Sharonville.
Right.
And that has to be done before we want to even consider. But I did explain connectivity is one of our highest priorities, and we're looking for 42 first, then we have to address probably Cornell, and then long, much longer term, we'll get to Kemper. And I also did a note that Steve and Stephanie and I met with a couple of residents back when to finalize things, and I complimented Steve and Stephanie how well they worked together with the residents that we had to work with, and they represented the city very well. And that was a learning project for us. And I think we've learned and we've got to improve from it, but the important thing is, you know, you always hear complaints, you never hear compliments of people saying they, they liked it was done. So my thanks to Steve. We got a few, they have about three or four project areas that are going to be tough to finish, and that's going to take it, but then it should be wrapped up and it'll, it'll look very nice. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Mrs. Knight?
Yes. Yes, I had a, I'm, I live on Malayer Drive, and we had a new resident at the bottom of the hill move in, and they just thought they could just throw every bit of garbage urban and just let it sit.